You're now visible, David.
Okay, I think it's okay to get started then.
Okay. So, welcome to the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of February twenty-three. We begin our meetings with the flag salute, so please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Villalobos, will you please do the TV coverage and roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV, Channel Twenty, at nine AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Marcos Valley, Samaria, and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays after five PM on Channel Twenty. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Would you like me to move on to roll call, or would you like to introduce our new commissioner?
Yes, I would like to introduce our newest commissioner, Vincent Martinez, representing the fifth district. Welcome to the Planning Commission, Vince, and we look forward to sharing our projects with you over the coming months and years, hopefully.
Thank you and good morning. Thank you.
Did you want to take a minute and just explain a little bit of your background?
Sure. Vincent Martinez, an attorney here in Santa Maria, California, been here for twenty-four years. My wife's a dentist here, Carolyn Baldevia is here in Santa Maria. I raised my family here in Santa Maria, two children, but one's Loyola Marymount, the other one's in medical school at Tufts. And in my practice of law, I've done land use, I've done litigation, and I'm a certified mineral manager. So I bring some experience in land use and so forth. And my hope is just to serve the fifth district to the best of my abilities and listen to those who have something to say.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, welcome. And Mr. Villalobos, if you will, call the roll for us.
Commissioner Brightley. Commissioner Park. Commissioner Farini.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
And Chair Cooney.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. This is the place in our agenda which we had marked to save for a a presentation of a resolution to our colleague, Dan Blau. But instead, we were shocked and saddened to hear that Dan died on Friday. And I thought it would be appropriate if any of my fellow commissioners had comments about that. We will defer the resolution and just mention Dan and our thoughts this morning. Commissioner Brightley.
Thank you, Chair Cooney. Well, I first met Dan when I was an agent on the other side of the podium, and I always appreciated his very direct and slim considerations of things. He sort of knew what he wanted to do without too much complications, and so I always appreciated that. And then when I joined the commission a couple of years ago, I continued to enjoy the banter with him, even even the lack of ability to pronounce my name. And I loved that he was so true to himself, and he would say, oh, that's nice, so it's Brightley. I'm probably going to get it wrong, let's move on. Anyway, totally, totally himself all the time and totally a great public servant, and I'm definitely going to miss him.
Commissioner Park, any remarks about Dan?
You know, I was already feeling really sad about Dan leaving the planning commission. And then to hear that he left this world for a better place is very hard for me to bear and very hard for many others to bear. The highest honor I can give him is to say that I learned so much from him. And you know, he just had such a welcoming spirit. He welcomed me to the planning commission before I even actually joined you folks formally. I was out of hearing, and I thought that was very nice of him. He was very patient with me as a neophyte while he was chair. And in fact, when I became chair the next year, none of you may know this, David Villalobos did, I asked to have Dan sit on my left to kind of advise me, and you Chairman Cooney had sit on my right. So I had the most experienced people, and I kind of had you switch political positions. But I learned so much from Dan on how to take ourselves seriously, do the job seriously, but not take ourselves too seriously so that we didn't relate to our basic function of serving the public and working with the community. Dan was always, in his whole life, connected with his community, and that was a great example for me. He taught me to always be reasonable here, always be practical. It was a very good thing. I always thought it was kind of amazing that probably it'd be hard to find two people that are further apart from the political poles or spectrum than Dan and me, but we always found common ground. And I like that because this has been a year that in our country there's been terrible division, and you wonder how people can find common ground. But Dan was very good at doing that, and he was a true American and a great example for all of us. I'm very sad. Thank you, Mr. Cooney, for letting me do this.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Commissioner Martinez, I know you were friends with Dan, who told me so. He was pleased about your appointment to succeed him. Any comments from you at this point?
Sure, and thank you for the opportunity. I got to know Dan by serving with him on actually the Santa Maria Country Club Board originally, and by just knowing him socially through that. And we found him open to discussion, whether we agreed or disagreed. It was always a discussion of trying to find something that we can agree upon. And in coming into this position, we had many conversations, and the obvious plan was is for him to serve as my mentor in doing this, and I was very comfortable with that, and I appreciated his offer. He was always giving, and I appreciated his views, and he's going to be missed, dearly missed.
I agree. Commissioner Farini.
Thank you, Chair Cooney. Well, there's just not enough good words to say, and I know I'll miss about ninety-seven percent of all the positive things Dan did for us on the commission, for me personally, and for our community. As far as serving with him on the commission, it was like you could always look to Dan for common sense. And he was very transparent about where he was going, what direction. And, you know, and then there were his little quips, you know, we maybe wouldn't move to that direction, and he'd go, that's not quite what I was thinking. Let me try again. He was always a project advocate. He wanted projects to go through, good projects to go through, and projects that weren't so good, he wanted to see those refined. And in Santa Maria, I've shown my kids this week, it's like, if we drive around our town, if you see a nice building, Dan was probably involved. He, his projects throughout our town brought very positive influence. I did get to spend some time with his family and friends the other night. And as you would expect, great stories, all positive, and everyone there thankful for the influence Dan had on their lives. So Vince, you have some big shoes to fill, and we look forward to working with you, and I know you'll do a great job. Thank you, Chair Cooney.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Farini. I know you were close to Dan in many ways, and we really appreciated your letting us know early on of the tragedy and the loss, and gave us a little time to process that before today's meeting. I would invite members of the staff that work with Dan. We have our Planning Commission Secretary, Jeff Wilson. Do you have any comments to add, Jeff?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add to what has already been said. Sorry for my voice. One day it'll get better. Dan was one of the first commissioners that I met when I first, when I got here five, six years ago, and working on a project in YMCA here in Santa Maria. And Dan, either directly and directly, had found ways to pull me into the community, you know, being interviewed as far as part of the YMCA programs. Dan and I had lively debates when he was a chair on the phone. We had conversations on projects he was working on. The last conversation I had with Dan is a phone call where he called and said, thank you for meeting with me, even though you're a messenger and I didn't like what you said, thanks for the meeting. So that's Dan. He was passionate, he understood both sides of the counter, working on the planning commission and being a developer. And I appreciated his passion and his ability to move things forward and look for an eye to streamlining. So my memory of Dan is just him supporting me as a new staff member, and also his passion to streamline and make things easier for the public, in the, in the community. He's a great contributor to both the department and the community, so I'll miss him. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Jeff, very nice. Director Plaman, probably too much to say, but I want to give you a chance.
No, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I was really shocked and very saddened to hear about his passing because he was really full of life. And I'm so grateful that I stepped in it the last meeting and said, oh, you're retiring. And I got to say some things to him directly about what I appreciated about him. And he was just a straight shooter. And you always knew what he was thinking. My favorite line from him was, an ordinance amendment takes ten minutes. And as, when I was representing private applicants, you know, could always rely on him to be, like, as Commissioner Farini said, really a common sense type of person who understood what it was like to try and process an application. And he was, he was a real character. And I'm very sad for the community that he's not around anymore, and I wish his family well. And I'm sorry that Commissioner Martinez has to come to the commission with this sort of sad news, but I'm sure you will fill his shoes nicely. Because the chair said, he was very pleased that you were the appointment, and so I want to welcome you to the commission as well. And at some point, we will be able to do something more formal for Dan. But he was, he was really a very passionate, strong, and straightforward individual, and I have a lot of respect for that.
Well said. Anybody else on the calls now on the screen?
Mr. Chair, may I just say a couple of words?
Of course, I was saving you for last, David, but let's assume you're last.
You know, I'd known Dan a long time now, since he's been on the commission, and just was trying to remember when he came on board. And, you know, I think that all the things that people have said about him, Dan being a straight shooter, are very true. But, and I was always struck by, you know, how generous he can be. And I know that he, you know, he had a lot of issues over the years, but he would, he'd be in the hearing every, like, the next week, and I'd always question why he didn't take some time off for himself. And I think that being on the commission was very important to him, and I respected and admired the importance that he gave to the work that the commission does and his, how he saw his role as a public servant. So I have a lot of respect for Dan, and I will miss him a lot.
David, do we have any members of the public that might want to speak on this subject?
Mr. Chair, we only have one member of the public on board, that's Mr. Chitello. I'm not sure if he wanted to speak on this item. Mr. Chitello, if you raise your hand, I'll call on you, otherwise I'll assume not. Yes, actually. Mr. Chitello.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Mark Chitello, and I really wanted to speak in public comment and welcome Commissioner Martinez to the Planning Commission. I've been a frequent flyer at the Planning Commission, I think I've been appearing since nineteen eighty-seven, been involved in a lot of different issues, and spent a lot of time in the Planning Commission hearing room back when we did that. And I think that the planning commissioner's role in Santa Barbara County is one of the most important, critical, and probably one of the more challenging responsibilities in the county. And I think it's not just a matter of saying yes or no, it's how you commissioners hold yourselves and how you analyze issues and how you assess changing conditions, and you work with staff and work with the community to help shape the face of our community. And Dan was a very interesting character on the Planning Commission. I think all of your words are correct, are accurate, of course, as we've gotten to know him over, over the years. He was clear, he was a straight shooter, you knew where he was coming from. And I really appreciated his consistency and his commitment to all of these issues and to the county, where he did, from coming the other side of the counter there, as Secretary Wilson mentioned, he did bring a different perspective, but it was always one of, with respect and recognizing the importance of getting it right for everybody. So I too will miss Commissioner Blau, and I'm still in shock, I just learned this morning of his passing. So I'm still processing that a little bit, but I do very much wanted to offer a warm welcome to Commissioner Martinez and appreciation to all of the commissioners for the culture and, as well as management and staff, the culture of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, and taking all of these responsibilities very seriously and working very, very hard. So thank you, and again, Commissioner Martinez, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chitello. You know, it's partially due to your input on frequent projects that we felt we needed to bulk up and add a third attorney to our planning. We'll be ready for you. Just in conclusion, Malora, you have your hand up again, something else.
Yeah, just a question, if there's going to be any kind of a item in front of the Board of Supervisors, it would be great if you could tell us, Director Plaman. You know, we might want to go and chime in there, and if there's any other, well, I know we'll hear from you about an agenda item for us, anything more formal, that was all.
Yeah, I'm happy to keep you posted. I have not heard of anything yet, but I expect there will be something. Thank you.
Just in conclusion about Dan, you know, he joined the commission about four years after I did. And, and over the time since, eighteen years since, we've, we've been more and more close in terms of the real issues of life, and I could always count on Dan to advocate for a better planning commission, a better planning department, a better planning process. He always had a comment if he thought something could be improved. And, and he's been, he's had a significant impact on this commission, and going forward will have the benefit of his wisdom. The one, the one thing that he was getting in the habit of doing, and I reminded him, was when we were on Zoom, he didn't just get to start talking without asking the chair's commission, permission to do that. And he, he didn't, he wasn't patient with the raise hand feature, so you could count on him to chime in regardless of whether he was recognized. And, and it was tolerated because it was Dan, and, and he always had something worthwhile to say. So we have business to attend to, and I think the first, first thing we'll ask is Secretary Wilson to report on today's agenda and the projection report, too.
Thank you, Chair, and I do want to say welcome Commissioner Martinez to the commission. I look forward to working with you. When we look at the agenda today, item number one, the commissioner should have received a memo, I believe, yesterday. The appellants have withdrawn their appeal. There's a memo that provides or outlines actions for the Planning Commission. Essentially, there's no, there won't be any action on the specific project, just accepting the withdrawal and acknowledging there's no action. The memo outlines the recommended motions on that. And then we do have two additional items from Long Range Planning Division, and we're requesting that we switch those, order those two items, and take the comprehensive plan annual progress report first, and then do the Long Range Planning Division work program last. So basically, just switching items two and three. I think, looking at the previous hearing, it flows better with those, with that order. So Chair, that's the status of the agenda today. If there's any questions, I can move on to the projection report.
Don't see any questions on the, on the change of the agenda, but we'll take, obviously, item one first, and we can take action with respect to that, or at least acknowledge the withdrawal of the appeal. So, Mr. Wilson, yes, the projection report, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, moving to the projection report. Our next hearing is on March second. We have an appeal of a cannabis project that's located in Lompoc area off of San Julian Road. And then we have the another cannabis project located in the Carpinteria area off of thirty-five oh eight Villarreal. So that's next week, March second, and then following that, March ninth, we have the Arctic Cold freezer project on the agenda on that date. And then moving down, March thirtieth, we have a five-year comprehensive plan capital improvement program that's scheduled for March thirtieth. And then moving into April, we don't have anything in April projected at this point. Staff is going to be reviewing their projects and determining what projects may be able to go in early April. The other item that is scheduled is April twenty-seventh, which is a refugio farm appeal of a cannabis project. Now, last hearing, Commissioner Park had asked about April thirteenth. Our budget workshops this year is Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, so there isn't a conflict on April thirteenth. We could hold a hearing if we wanted to. As of right now, there are no items projected for April thirteenth, so the commission can either take action on that if they want to today, or leave the hearing in place and revisit it at a later time. I know Commissioner Park had a conflict potentially on that date. As of right now, there are no items projected for that date. And that concludes the projection report.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any questions from the commission? My feeling about the thirteenth is that that's still over a month away, and we ought to give it a little bit more time just to see how our agenda develops, but I certainly have no objection to canceling that meeting if we, if we can get all our hearings done on other dates. Commissioner Brightley.
Director, Secretary Wilson, you mentioned something about on April twenty-seventh there being a refugio cannabis case. Had that been on the projection report last year and dropped off and came back on, or is this a new item on the projection report? That's, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Brightley through the chair, I don't recall if that's coming back on or not.
You know, is this really close to one oh one? Between one oh one and the, and the ocean, you know, right past the Gabita Tunnel, do you know if that's kind of the location? Because I had some comments from the public about that about five months ago.
Commissioner Brightley through the chair, I don't have that information available. I can have staff reach out to you with information if you would like.
Great, not a rush, but if they can, just should be an email or something, great. Thank you.
Okay, don't see anything else on the projection report. I think we covered public comment. David, unless anybody's been added to the public comment request list?
No.
All right, then, this is the time in our meeting where commissioners can share any information that they may have of pertinence to, to our work. Anybody today with a report? Not seeing any, okay, let's go to the minutes. We have two minutes, two sets of minutes. The first is the meeting of February second. Commissioner Farini.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
The discussion, I found a little bit of a typo, a very minor, that I'll share with Mr. Villalobos after the meeting. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, well, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Brightley. Commissioner Park. Commissioner Park, could you repeat?
Not seeing Commissioner Park right now. Let's go ahead with the roll call, David.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez, I assume you
abstain, yeah.
Great. And Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes three oh one.
Okay, the second set of minutes, February nine. Did everybody get a chance to look at those? Commissioner Park is back. We're looking at the minutes of February nine. Commissioner Park. Anybody ready to make a motion again? Commissioner Farini, thank you very much.
Yes, I move for approval.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Brightley. Any further discussion on those minutes? None, so we will call for the roll again, David.
Commissioner Cooney.
Hi.
Commissioner Brightley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Mr. Park.
You're muted, John.
We'll come back to Commissioner Park.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Abstain.
Aye.
Great, motion passes four oh one.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the director's report. Ms. Plaman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I have a brief report today. I did want to touch base on COVID-nineteen requirements and public health orders. So as you probably are aware that the state So as you probably are aware that the state and the county public health officer lifted the mask mandate for non, well, for our type of facilities. I won't go into the list of facilities that are required, but it's schools and hospitals and other public health settings that are still required to wear them. But there is still a recommendation for social distancing and for wearing of masks inside, although it's not required. So we do have an order that came from the health officer that indicates that, or where allows the commission to continue to take action to extend the teleconferencing and the, extend it so that we will have in-person meetings into the, in the future, but extend the Zoom meetings for the next month or two until we can kind of get a sense of whether or not we'll see another spike in this second variant of Omicron. But we are in our offices, haven't really changed our process. We still have the availability for people to come in and have appointments. So we're going to continue in that vein. As I've indicated before, most people tend to want to use the electronic submitter process rather than coming into the office. But we're still allowing that and we're allowing people to come in and meet. And, and we will be asking people to wear masks. They're not going to be required to, but we'll be asking until we get a better sense of things. In terms of board action, the board took action on the Caldwell cannabis appeal and they denied the appeal and approved the project. And that was on the 15th of February. That was last week. I should also let you know that the board took action on some amendments to chapter 50 that set some drop dead dates for non-conforming cannabis growers to obtain issued land use permits and receive a business license. And that will be October 31st, 2022. So that we can make sure people continue to move through the process. And then they also amended the cap. There had been some discussion at the board about the fact that the cap discouraged the development or request for processing facilities. And the board wanted to amend our process or the, the CEO's process to allow for additional processing facilities in the county. And what they did was they excluded the processing facility from being counted towards the cap. And in the inland area, that's not much of a difference. There, there's maybe about three acres that would be freed up. If you exclude the, the approved processing facilities in the Carpinteria Valley, it free, would free up about maybe six to seven acres. But we already have a lot of, we already have enough applications in to cover, you know, that would backfill into that. And the way the, the way the, the changes to chapter 50 were drafted, it gives the applicant who has that processing facility on their property the right of first refusal to that additional acreage that has been freed up by excluding the, the processing area from the cap. So I'm, I'm, I'm guessing I'm going to have some questions about that. So I'm going to pause here and, and take those questions. If, if there are any.
Commissioner Bridley.
Well, we got a lot of public comment about that amendment to chapter 50. And so when you say Director Plaman, that the existing applicants in the queue would have the first right of refusal for that additional 67 acres, if I'm understanding what you said, is that, that they are all the way through the entitlement process and they're somewhere queued in the business license process? Or are they somewhere pending to get to final LUP or a hearing?
So, yeah. Commissioner Bridley through the chair. It's actually the, the applicant that has the processing facility. If they, when, once that processing facility is excluded from the total acreage on their property, they have the right of first refusal to expand their grow on their property. So it's the applicant that gives up that acreage or, you know, that frees up that acreage. But in Carpinteria, I don't think it's likely that that will happen because they're already pretty well built out in terms of acreage for any facilities that they need. And the greenhouses. So I, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how that will play out, but it's, it's the applicant that has the processing facility that gets the right of first refusal to that new freed up acreage. But those people, they have to be in the business license process to be able to access that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this point for Director Plaman? Don't see any. Lisa, so proceed.
Super. Just have a few items on the future board agendas that I want to lay out for the planning commission. That is the Galileo apartments are going for their final action to the board on March 1st. So that'll be next week. The G and K cannabis, the Trigaro appeal of that approval is going to the board also next week. And then on the 8th of March, we will see the Orca gas station Exxon trucking also. And then we have a big day on March 15th, which is the long range work program, the Steiner appeal of the Rafino map and a Montecito item, which is the Hocker Philippines lot line adjustment. The abused appeal of Hacienda Amador homestay is going to the board, I think on April 5th. And that is includes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Don't see any questions. So we can move down the agenda to our standard agenda. And Mr. Vialobos, if you're ready, could you read item one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon as a hearing on the request of the appellant Starlane and Deerburg Vineyards LLC to consider case number 21 APL 54, an appeal with the planning director's approval of land use permit case number 19 LUP 15.
Okay. So we have information that this item is not going to be before us today. And we have, I see, who's the staff member for this project? Oh, we have Ms. Steinfeld and Ms. Taylor. Anybody else?
Ms. Dara Elcurty is the assigned planner and she is ready to provide a quick overview for the planning commissioners.
Okay, great. Ms. Elcurty.
Good morning, Chair Cooney and members of the commission. The appellant Starlane and Deerburg Vineyards withdrew their appeal of the Tierra Tambora Cannabis cultivation project on February 22nd. As a result, the director's approval from September 24th, 2021 is final. Today, we're recommending that your commission acknowledge the withdrawal and drop the item from today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Farini.
Thank you, Chair Cooney. I, I just need to report ex parte that the property owner of the project called me a couple of times to discuss the appeal. And so I had a couple telephone conversations with him, just encouraging him to reach out with his neighbor and try to work it out without us.
Thank you, Commissioner Farini. That's likely a factor in the decision to drop the matter. So let's ask Amy Steinfeld, do you have, do you wish to comment at this point? Ms. Steinfeld.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I just want to report that we are thrilled to have a settlement between these two long-term neighbors, the Garra family and the Deerburg family. And excited to be here today to present the withdrawal. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anything to add from your side?
No, we, we feel the same. I think the Deerburgs are relieved to have this behind them and to have an agreement with their neighbor in place. And I will have to say, I have known Commissioner Blough for a long time and I am lamenting that he is not here to chastise Amy and I for withdrawing an appeal. I know it was his least favorite thing that we do on occasion when we have settlements. So I will miss, I will miss his comments to that effect. But yeah, we, we have withdrawn and appreciate the commission's consideration this morning.
Thank you, thank you both for, for appearing. So Commissioner Farini, would you like to formally acknowledge the settlement? And, and we can, we can then proceed to the rest of our agenda.
Pardon? Yes. Thank you, Chair Cooney. I think I would just like to make a motion to follow staff's recommended actions from their memorandum dated February 22nd, which is to accept the withdrawal of the appeal. Acknowledge upon withdrawal of the appeal, there is no action for the planning commission and determine that the above action is exempt from secret.
Mr. Pettit, comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I apologize if I missed it, but I, I do recommend that you call for public comment before taking final action on the item.
Thank you. Mr. Vialobos, any public comment for this item?
I didn't have anyone sign up. Again, if Mr. Chetillo wants to speak, raise your hand. Otherwise, we don't have any public comment on this item. I'm not seeing a hand from Mr. Chetillo.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Farini. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it since it's in the third district.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bridley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Farini.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Chair Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, thank you all. And thank you, counsel, for your hard work on this matter. Okay, let's take a seven-minute break before we start with item number three, which is going to be the one we take next. And we'll come back and staff will be ready to present. Mr. Villalobos, any public comment for this item?
I didn't have anyone sign up. Again, if Mr. Chitillo wants to speak, raise your hand. Otherwise, we don't have any public comment on this item. I'm not seeing a hand from Mr. Chitillo.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Farini. Is there a second?
I'll second it since it's in the third district.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bridley.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Dan. I'll wait for you to go ahead and get the slideshow up.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair Kuni and commissioners. This morning, I will be presenting the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report. Next slide, please. The annual progress report, also referred to as the APR, is a state-mandated report that provides information regarding the status of the county's comprehensive plan and progress in its implementation, as well as the county's progress in meeting its regional housing needs allocation in calendar year 2021. Government Code Section 65400 requires the county to submit the APR to the Board of Supervisors, Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and State Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st of each year. The county also submits the report to the City of Santa Barbara in accordance with policies in the Mission Canyon Community Plan. Next slide, please. The 2021 APR shows that the county continues to make progress in maintaining and implementing the comprehensive plan, especially the 2015 to 2023 housing element update. The housing element contains 37 programs to help meet the housing goals and needs of the unincorporated county. The county made progress toward implementing three of these programs in 2021, which are listed on this slide. Table D of Attachment 1 to the APR provides information on the status of these and other active programs. The county also initiated updates to the circulation element and the safety element in 2021, and began preparation of an entirely new environmental justice element. Next slide, please. The 2020, oops, sorry. The annual progress report also summarizes the county's progress in meeting its RENA for the 2015 to 2023 housing element period. RENA progress is determined by the number of building permits that the county issued for net new housing units for calendar year 2021. This includes permits issued for housing units such as single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, accessory dwelling units, and agricultural employee dwellings. But it does not include replacement units, such as disaster rebuilds or group quarters such as dorms. The annual progress report reports the estimated affordability level of each unit based on the 2021 state income limits, which are adjusted for household size and based off of available local housing data. Local housing costs are researched and estimated by ZIP code, and therefore, the affordability level of most units depends on their location. In some areas of the county, even small units are not affordable to lower-income households. And therefore, the county cannot automatically assume that all accessory dwelling units and agricultural employee dwellings are affordable by design. Next slide, please. This table shows the number of building permits the county issued for new housing units, organized by income category, within the unincorporated county from calendar years 2014 to 2021. The last row of the table shows the county's RENA for each income category for the planning period. In 2021, the county issued building permits for 390 new housing units, which is an increase from the 205 units permitted in 2020. As you can see, the county has exceeded its RENA for the low, moderate, and above-moderate income categories. In that same time, the county has only met 43% of its very-low income RENA. As shown in the second to last row, the county has issued permits for 68 very-low and 198 low-income units in total. But most of these units came from accessory dwelling units and large affordable housing projects in 2015 and 2021. If the county continues this trend of permitting little, very-low income units, it will continue to fall further behind on meeting its RENA and remain subject to SB 35, which I will discuss in a later slide. Next slide, please. This graph shows the same information as the previous slide, the number of building permits that the county issued for new housing units from 2014 to 2021, organized by income category. The last set of columns on the right shows the county's total RENA for the planning period, which is 661 units. At 1,791 units, the county has far exceeded its above-moderate, moderate, and low-income RENA. However, the county has only issued permits for 68 very-low income units, or 43% of its RENA. To get back on track, the county must issue building permits for at least 91 new very-low income housing units by the end of the RENA projection period in 2022. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 35, codified as Government Code Section 65913.4, establishes a mandatory streamlined ministerial approval process for qualifying housing developments in jurisdictions that have not met their pro-rata share of RENA or have not submitted APRs. In June 2018, HCD determined that the county was subject to SB 35 streamlining due to insufficient progress toward meeting its lower-income RENA. HCD will release SB 35 determinations annually in spring, which will take into account permit data from the previous year's APR. Next slide, please. SB 35 streamlining applies to qualifying housing developments that contain at least 50% of affordable units and are located on urban infill sites. These projects are subject to ministerial objective planning standards. To plan for potential development, LRP will continue processing objective design standards for SB 35 projects in 2022. Next slide, please. The preparation of the APR is an administrative activity that does not authorize new developments or otherwise result in physical changes to the environment. Therefore, the preparation and submittal of this report is not a project and is not subject to CEQA. Next slide, please. On February 16th, the Montecito Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted five to zero to receive and file the APR, and recommended that the County Planning Commission direct staff to provide the APR to the Board, state agencies, and the City of Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. Accordingly, staff recommends that your commission take the following actions: receive and file the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report, determine that the preparation and submittal of this report is an activity that is not subject to CEQA, and lastly, recommend that the County Planning Commission direct staff to provide the annual progress report to the Board of Supervisors, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, state HCD, and the City of Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Almeida. Questions from the commission?
I'm going to ask a quick question, and this is showing my neophyte status. What, what, what happens if we don't meet those RENA guidelines?
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. If we don't meet the RENA guidelines, then we become subject to SB 35, which is a streamlining process to help us issue building permits for lower-income housing at a faster rate.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bridley.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So what is, what is that streamlining process look like? Is it less discretion and expedited, building plan checked? Or can you help us out with what those, what those results are exactly? And also, have we, have we ever fallen into that SB 35 requirement already? Or we just keep on floating it, but we're at the end of our reporting period? So now it's going to be do or die, if you're fine, if that makes sense? Maybe, here's the joke. Do or permit?
Excuse me, Chair, through the chair. If you want, Ms. Almeida, if we could put slide, the PowerPoint backup on, then Ms. Almeida could go back through slides seven and eight, because that's where she addressed that. I think that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Bridley through the chair. Yes, so SB 35 requires cities and counties to streamline review and approve eligible affordable housing projects, which exempts projects from environmental review under CEQA. The process does not allow public hearings to consider the project, rather only design review or public oversight of the development is allowed, which must be objective and strictly focused on assessing compliance with criteria for streamlined projects, as well as objective design review of the project.
Okay, so it's really not different than the SB 9 and 10 in a way. I mean, you know, we don't get to have a hearing on people being able to subdivide their lot now per the state mandate anyway, but this is actually encouraging more units. I mean, I probably should have had a conversation with you guys before the hearing, and I apologize. But again, what does that look like exactly? So no, no hearings by the hearing officer or the planning commission if it's over five units, like we would normally have on a track map? And what else? I mean, objective design standards, we've been talking about those kind of vaguely for a long time, with SB 9 and 10 coming along and ADU stuff. So I'm throwing a lot of general questions your way, and I apologize if it was somewhere in the report, I guess I didn't catch those specifics. So maybe you can help me understand.
Yes, so Commissioner Bridley through the chair. Projects for affordable housing income levels to be eligible for the streamlined ministerial approval process, they have several criteria they must meet. They must be in, located in urban infill area. They must have at least two residential units being proposed. They have to have a general planned or zoning designation that allows residential or mixed use. They cannot be located on property with any of the following areas: coastal zone, prime farmland, farmland, wetlands, very high fire hazard severity zone, hazardous waste sites, delineated earthquake fault zones, flood plains, floodways, community conservation plan areas, habitat for protected species, or on a qualifying mobile home site. That the development could not, would not demolish any housing units that have not been occupied by tenants in the last 10 years. The development would not demolish historic structures. They must meet all objective general plan zoning subdivision and design review standards. Yeah, lots of, they must have parking.
So, I mean, clearly, it's intended for infill development. That's what you said in your summary, and that really helped explain it, because it's probably not going to be, it's probably going to be more in the second district and parts of the fifth district, and a couple pieces of, you know, third and fourth. So that helps, that helps a lot. Thank you. That was the only question I had. Thanks.
I have one question related to that, Ms. Almeida. That is, has the county done any analysis of available properties
Two are currently approved and two are in review for SB 35. The two that are approved, one is called the Patterson Housing Unit, and it has 24 units, 12 which would be lower income. And also, Harry's House, which was approved for 60 affordable units for seniors.
And where is that located?
I cannot recall off the top of my head where Harry's House is located, but I could find that information and provide it to you.
And the two others, if you don't know right now where they are, that'd be great to learn where those are as well. Thank you. Yes.
It appears that Harry's House is the Golden Inn? I think that's, you're probably more familiar with it being called by that name. And to get back to your question about, I think you're asking about the eligibility. How many sites might be eligible? We've done general screening using the criteria that Ms. Almeida shared with all of you just a minute ago. It is actually quite limiting when you apply all of those various layers, everything from the environmentally sensitive habitat layers to whether or not you're in a severe high-fire hazard area to being in an urban infill site. So it does window things down quite a bit. But it also, as Ms. Almeida shared, we are drafting standards for SB 35. And when we come back, we can provide more information about the extent of eligibility for that as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clement. We think of these requirements as applying more generally to cities, and I'm sure they have their own processes. But I was just curious how much the county had thought of sites that are not in the incorporated areas. Commissioner Park has a question.
Yes, this is gonna be a very broad question, so I'm glad to accept a very broad answer. You know, speaking very generally, and I know you're a new planner, at least to us, so maybe you haven't heard me rant about this before. But so many of our projects that the County Planning Commission are third district projects, and so many of them are agricultural projects. And one point I always make is, what's going on with ag housing? Because we spent a lot of time on an agricultural employee dwelling unit ordinance that I thought would be an answer to some of these housing questions. We have so many unhoused workers or workers that are housed and just not the best conditions. So my question is simply this: are we issuing permits for ag employee dwelling housing? Is it happening? Are we getting any action out of that ordinance? If you know.
Yeah. Commissioner Park through the chair. We have issued agricultural employee dwelling units. Let me see. I'm trying to find the exact number for you.
Well, I'll take a ballpark number if you got that.
We've issued a lot of ADUs in 2021. We issued 166. But I don't have a specific number on agricultural employee dwellings. I did see planning permits in review, but I don't have an exact number for issued building permits right now.
See, I don't think it's happening myself, but I hope somebody would prove me that I'm wrong. But fair warning on these cannabis projects and others that come before me, including the one that was withdrawn today. I'm gonna ask more and more questions about how come we're actually, in some cases, as the project we were gonna have today, eliminating housing, because it doesn't comply with building department, building codes. And yet, we're not adding housing on these projects when I think we need them. But that's another story. So thanks. If somebody can ever get that information to me, really, at any time, in any meeting, I'd sure like hearing it. But thank you for your excellent presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Any other questions from commissioners? It doesn't appear that, oops, there's Commissioner Bradley again. You're muted, Laura.
One curious, and I think I probably answered it for myself, but the reason that you have to report to the city of Santa Barbara, is that because of the Mission Canyon Plan that lapses to jurisdictions? And you don't have such a community plan for the city of Galita, for example? Or frankly, any other incorporated city in the county?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yes, we report to the city of Santa Barbara because of the Mission Canyon Community Plan.
Okay. And, you know, kind of building on Commissioner Park's question, I, you know, I'm not sure where the right discussion is for the issue about ag employee housing. I completely concur with him. And I completely appreciate the fact that, you know, there's a farmer going in for a complicated entitlement, and he's got two or three old buildings. And so it's much easier to tear them down than rehab them. But it just seems, you know, backwards that we're not saying at least maintain your existing farmworker housing on the farm and, you know, for the new entitlement. And I'm not sure, you know, where does that discussion happen for us? Or where is that effort captured by staff? Maybe that's a Dan question, I don't know.
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. I would say hold off on that discussion until we start presenting to you updates on the housing element. That's where you're gonna get the opportunity to discuss big policy questions about how to address or kickstart agricultural employee dwelling housing production. So I'd say hold until we have that opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Then Commissioner Bradley through the chair. If I could add one more thing, while SB 35 doesn't directly address farmworker housing, there are other state laws that do, and they provide some similar type of streamlining requirements. For example, the Housing Accountability Act is one where certain qualifying farmworker housing is subject to only objective development standards. And that's a fairly complicated piece of legislation. And coming up, Jesse Steele will touch upon it, but it may be sometime in the future, we can give you a briefing on that particular legislation, which is in effect now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bell. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? Ready to move to a motion or discussion of a motion? Saw the proposed motion. Staff gave us... Who would like to make it? Commissioner Frini? You're muted, Commissioner Frini.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendations on this item.
Okay, and Commissioner Bradley? Is that leftover? You're muted again, Laura.
I'll second it.
All right. We got a second. We don't need you any further on that, Commissioner Bradley. Hang on.
No worries.
You can give her credit for the second. I'm okay.
No, it's all right.
I need the minutes. It's good, it's good. Park has a second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to accept staff's recommendation as presented by Ms. Salamila. So let's call for the roll.
Chair Cooney, if I could interrupt. Can we just, I don't know if we acknowledged whether or not there's any public comment on this.
Right.
Jeff beat me. Jeff beat me to it.
Public comment.
There's no, for the record, there's no public comment.
See, I knew that. But good reminder. Okay, no public comments. So we're ready for the roll call, Mr. Villalobos.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Commissioner Park.
Hi.
Commissioner Frini.
Hi.
Commissioner Martinez.
Hi.
And Commissioner, or Chair Cooney.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. So we have one item left on our agenda. Mr. Villalobos, if you'll read that one into the record, we can get started.
Yes, the following is adhering on the request of the Planning and Development Department, Long Range Planning Division staff to have the County Planning Commission receive and file a report regarding the Long Range Planning Division's fiscal year 2022 to 2025 work program and direct staff to forward any comments that the County Planning Commission might have regarding the work program to the Board of Supervisors.
Very good. Do we have staff ready to go on that presentation?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes, good morning, Chair Cooney. This is Dan Clement with the Long Range Planning Division. I'll be providing the presentation today. So, and Commissioner Martinez, welcome aboard. Sucker! No, just kidding. Your boss is a comedian, so I can throw that in, right? No, but in all seriousness, thank you, everyone. What I'm gonna be presenting to you today is the three-year Long Range Planning Work Program as we, that is, staff is recommending today. The presentation's gonna be as follows. I'm just gonna sum up what we've accomplished during the first half of this fiscal year. I'm gonna discuss what we have remaining for this fiscal year.
Chair Cooney, have my hand raised just before we get started. I need to sign off on the Zoom, and I'm gonna rejoin on the telephone. And I don't know how to raise hands on the telephone, but perhaps at the end of this presentation, which I know will be very good, just call on me if I don't raise my hand in some way, just to get a comment or two, in case I have some. I appreciate, well, thank you.
Do you need a few minutes to hook up the phone?
Don't wait for me. I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Clement. Please continue.
Yeah, no problem. So just continuing, we're going to discuss some of the considerations that go into the recommendations for the work program. And we're gonna summarize our actual recommendations. And then I have our housing team here. They're gonna present a special report on housing-related matters. We could address maybe some of the items that came up during the last item, any others you may have as well. And then, of course, we'll cover any questions, public comments that you might have or might exist on the work program, and then we'll cover our recommended actions. So with regard to our accomplishments during the first half of this fiscal year, this is my favorite part of the year, because I get to brag about the great work of my team. As I'll explain later, we are short one planner, but the 13 of us who are currently working here are cranking out a lot of work as follows. Starting with our accessory dwelling units ordinance amendments, we completed the local coastal program amendment, submitted that to the Coastal Commission for certification, and we are working with them on some items that they're requesting regarding parking before we move forward on that, and more on that in a little bit in this presentation. With regard to our ag enterprise ordinance amendments, we've completed the public outreach for that project, and we are now in the process of preparing a second notice of preparation for the Environmental Impact Report, which we intend to publish in March. And then with regard to the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plans Amendments, this project involves plans that the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, or SB CAG, must adopt for each of the airports, and it establishes the flight safety and noise control zones around the airports. When SB CAG adopts those plans, there's a state mandate that requires us, the county, to go ahead and amend our comprehensive plan to be consistent with those plans or override them within 180 days of the adoption of those plans. So we've been working with SB CAG staff who notified us that they're going to restart this project that was put on hold for a little over a year or so. And we will be working with them going forward, so we've been working with them on that. With regard to our Coastal Resiliency, LCPA, we've already provided updates to your commission this calendar year with regard to the status of that. It's on hold pending negotiations that Director Plowman is conducting along with Supervisors Hart and Williams. They're negotiating some of the outstanding items of disagreement between the board adopted LCPA and the Coastal Commission. So we are assisting the director on that with that. With regard to the environmental justice element, we conducted the background research. We mapped the disadvantaged communities as defined by the state and have initiated public outreach for that project. And with the forms, stays, ordinance amendments, we're moving along. We completed public outreach, and we are actually currently reviewing an administrative draft MND with the intent of publishing that next month. For the housing element update, you're gonna hear more about this later in the presentation, but we conducted substantial amount of background research, selected consultants to do a number of services for us. And then we've also initiated public outreach with regard to that project. The next item most people are probably unaware of, this involves the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, report backs. And when LAFCO provides us, the county, with notice of action that they're gonna take, we, the Planning and Development Department, Long Range Planning Division staff, are responsible on behalf of the CEO to consolidate all of the comments regarding the LAFCO action on behalf of the county, provide that to the CEO, and then the CEO submits that to LAFCO on behalf of the county. So we received five of those and processed those during the first half of this fiscal year. The Long Range Planning Division also took on responsibilities associated with managing our pre-approved consultants list for the Planning and Development Department. We assume that from the Development Review Division. And as I mentioned earlier, we have one vacancy, and that was due to a much-deserved promotion of Ms. Karina Vinagas from a Planner 2 to Planner 3, which was an expansion position that the board adopted for this fiscal year to process zoning ordinance amendments. So we're currently recruiting for her previous position, which is a Planner 1 to recruitment. You already heard a bit about the RENA. We worked very closely with SB CAG staff on the development of the six-cycle RENA, which defines the housing demand that we must meet or plan for, I should say, with regards to the housing element update, and you'll hear more about that later. We also, similar to the LAFCO report backs, on behalf of the county, we review, that is, the Long Range Planning Division will review notices of projects in other jurisdictions that might have an effect on the county jurisdiction. And when we find that there's something of issue about which the county should comment, we will prepare the comments, consolidate those on behalf of the county departments, and provide those to the CEO for submittal to the agency processing the notices. So we received 18 notices of projects to which we responded, we provided three responses, excuse me. And you heard the update on their safety element update, excuse me. More specifically, we completed the climate change vulnerability assessment, and we also submitted a grant in the amount of $375,000 with assistance with the local office of emergency services. And that is to map evacuation routes, one of the requirements of the adaptation plan portion of the safety element update. And we also, I should say, we're putting together another grant application to fund some of the safety element update work in the amount of $150,000. We're currently assembling that, and we hope to submit that here soon. So a lot of work on the grant application front. With regard to the Santa Claus Lane Project, we are currently in an assistance mode. That is, the project's been handed off to the Public Works and Community Services Department, Parks Division, to actually implement. We processed a time extension for the coastal development permit for that project and are providing them with any support that they need to go ahead and build that sucker. You'll hear more about state housing density bonus law implementation later on this presentation, but we are working on implementing three laws that have been adopted. That is drafting ordinance amendments to implement them. Those are listed on the screen here. And then finally, with utility-scale solar ordinance, we've conducted research with regards to the project description and scope of work. Also, during the first half of this fiscal year, at the County Executive Office's encouragement, we initiated an Innovate SBC Process Improvement Project regarding the Long Range Work Program. And more specifically, the goals of the project was to come up with efficiencies or process improvements to more rapidly get our projects through the process, that is, the funnel of work that we do, in order to get more projects that the board wants us to address online. Innovate SBC is the process improvement organization that the county has contracted out with. They implement the Lean Six Sigma process improvement strategy when implementing projects like this one. And what we did is we brought in everyone from the County Executive Office to Ms. Jenna Richardson from County Council, PND Executive Management, Mr. Alex Tuttle from the Development Review Division, and then also a number of Long Range Planning Division staff to map out our current processes, identify... identify potential uh efficiencies and improvements, and then make recommendations to the CEO about um how we could do this. And some of the key recommendations, definitely not all, involve things like uh coming up with a, what we're calling a new rapid amendments process for zoning ordinance amendments, which, over which the board has very little to no discretion. These are kind of your no brainers, um, or cleanup items that every, are highly desirable. Um, they do not involve a CEQA document, and we just want to get those through. We don't want to slow them down with the anchors of other ordinances and put them in these uh ordinance management packages. So we developed a process for doing that. We also rely more on technology for our outreach and project management. We've developed a number of skills during the COVID era. Um, all of our staff are equipped to do these um online public outreach forums. And we wanted to utilize that more because we found that it was very effective, particularly with regard to targeting certain communities. And then um related to that, we also want to engage our technical advisory committees in a way that, in which we're getting uh useful information back from them. They're given the opportunity to consider and provide us with that information. And we want to come up with some sort of service level agreements or equivalents uh with regard to how we're going to conduct that interaction so that we can hear back from them at the right times. We're also going to uh utilize consultant services more frequently, particularly for our, our labor and time-intensive tasks. We are seeing more requirements, particularly from the state, on projects relating to the general plan elements and general plan element updates, such as the housing element update, the safety element update, and the new environmental justice, to do proactive, regular, and consistent outreach to particularly disadvantaged communities throughout the entirety of a project. And I bring that up because it's important because um most of us think of outreach as, hey, you go have a charrette at a community center or a church. Everybody goes down, spends a few hours down there, puts some stickies on the board. We summarize everything. Everybody goes home. That will no longer cut it, at least with regard to these projects. And the projects like the housing element update, over which the board ha, excuse me, the state has approval or certification authority, they want to see that we are making a good, real effort to conduct um these outreach. So we need help. That's very labor and time-intensive. It's very important. We want to do it, but we need consultant services to meet those demands. When it comes to consultant services, we also want to use the Plan Development Department's on-call consultant services because it's more efficient for us to do so. We don't have to go through the whole contract approval process ad hoc with each person we bring on board. We can just rely on those um on-call consultants, and it saves us time, and they're very competent, too. And then finally, we just need to do an overhaul of uh some of our project management tools or more resources that are available to us internally. So we're going to embark on those. So a number of good improvements came out of that project. Now, for the remainder of the fiscal year, this is what we got ahead of us. We are going to continue supporting the Public Works Department, uh, who is working on an active transportation plan. Once that's complete, then we're going to amend our comprehensive plan element, circulation element, I should say, excuse me, uh, to be consistent with that plan. With regard to the Ag Enterprise Ordinance Amendments, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be publishing the NOP for the EIR next month. That is the second notice of preparation. Um, and then we'll actually begin the EIR and draft ordinance amendments. I already explained the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Comprehensive Plan Consistency Amendments. Once SB CAG drafts and adopts those um, um, plans, then we will be required to go ahead and develop the amendments. So what we're doing right now is working with SB CAG to make sure that the mitigated negative declaration or the environmental document on which SB CAG and we will rely for our respective portions of this project is sufficient for the county standards. You already heard the great report by Ms. Alamea. We got to file our annual progress report by April first, twenty twenty-two. And then uh, in March, you're going to hear a report on our capital improvements program, comprehensive plan consistency report. We're going to complete that analysis and present the report to you. And then our Community Services Department Sustainability Division is preparing the new climate action plan, which will replace the current county energy and climate action plan. And we're anticipating that we're going to be amending our comprehensive plan to be consistent with the cap. So we are assisting the Community Services Department with the development of that plan. And with regard to the environmental justice element, we are going to be completing public outreach and uh initiating the mitigated negative declaration for that project. For our Farm States Ordinance Amendments, we want to complete the MND and then begin the Planning Commission hearings for that project. Housing element update, we're going to be doing a lot of work on this. I'm going to hold and let uh the housing team update you on that later in this presentation. Some of you might have been watching the board hearing last week. Uh, the board uh adopted an expanded project description for the Community Services Department's Parks Division's Recreation Master Plan. Once that is adopted, we're anticipating we're going to be amending our comprehensive plan to be consistent with that. So we're just coordinating with the Community Services Department on the development of the plan. For the safety element update, we are going to be continuing with public outreach and beginning the development of the adaptation plan using the grant funds that I described to you earlier. And for state housing density boost law implementation, there are the three laws that I breezed through during the last, uh, excuse me, an earlier slide. And um, it'll be up to the board whether or not they want us to finish that, or if they would like us to hold and work on some others. Because as we'll share with you in a moment, there are a number of uh laws that the board could direct us to work on. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the board uh provided an expansion position to Long Range Planning to develop zoning ordinance amendments packages. We are working on that, and we'll um present those to decision-makers starting um in late summer, fall of this year. And we're also working finally with the clerk of the board, who is uh responsible for managing the county code that's published online. And it's done through a service, uh, excuse me, a company called MuniCode. And we're working with the clerk of the board to upload the zoning ordinances in their entirety to the county code. And that was also, I should say, one of the process improvements that were identified as part of that process improvement program that, project that I mentioned earlier, uh, to reduce the time costs, uh, expense of uh managing and publishing those zoning notices. So we're really looking forward to that. Okay, so looking forward, what do we consider when we're developing our recommendations to the board for the three-year work program? Well, the first thing we think of are our multi-year projects, the ones that are ongoing, and we need to continue to provide support for them to be uh successful, for us to complete them. So we'll go through, we'll map all those out. We'll look at the remaining tasks, costs associated with it, and then we'll make our projections accordingly. We also want to make sure that we do not run afoul of any state or federal mandates. These could be anything from state federal uh laws to um orders, for, for example, from the Federal Communications Commission. Maybe there's a court decision that affects how or we should implement our comprehensive plan. We also, we always want to make sure that we prioritize those such that we are consistent and up to date, and we're um implementing the law correctly. For the co, in the comprehensive plan, there are a number of implementation programs that are set forth. So for example, when the housing element update comes to you next fall, uh, you're going to see that we're going to have a lot of recommendations about what we should be doing after the housing element is adopted in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so we always like to highlight those and prioritize those because it furthers the goals of the comprehensive plan as adopted by the board. And whenever we find, we have a county-sponsored project, that is a project that one of the other departments is at least partially responsible for implementing, we want to uh support our county comrades, so to speak, and make sure that the overall project is successful. And of course, it always comes down to money. This is a business and is public administration. It's not all politics. So of course, we always have to look at the bottom line and see how much of a budget we think we're going to get and estimate accordingly. So we have, we're budgeted for fourteen full-time equivalents, or FTEs, in our division. Um, we are vacant one, um, as mentioned earlier. When developing the recommendations, I assume that we are not going to get an expansion initially. If there is any indication from the CEO or others that there might be an expansion and what that looks like, then we will make a recommendation, as you'll see in a bit. But going out the gate, I assume that there will not be an expansion for the obvious reason. When it comes to the funding sources, in the past, those sources have included everything from, there is a small fee associated with building permits that plays, that goes to fund uh the maintenance of our general plan. I already mentioned to you the grants, some of the grants that we apply for. The board has also used cannabis tax revenue, particularly one-time funding on particular projects that they wanted to add to the work program. And then finally, the majority of our budget is funded using County General Fund. And then the final budget consideration when establishing priorities for the work program are deadlines for grants because that is quote "free" unquote money, uh, that we do not want to jeopardize. So we always want to make sure that those projects are moving along according to their schedules. Now, taking that all into consideration, what does this look like? So the first group of activities that the Long Range Planning Division uh can be divided into are our services that we provide to the public, other departments, the board, and others. Um, this consists of everything from conducting those grant research activities. We also will be technical staff, will support the Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee. Um, we also go out and do general information to the public. We provide technical support to other departments on uh planning and land use-related issues, as well as a number of others. Uh, these individual tasks, the amount of time associated with them will fluctuate, fluctuate from year to year. But collectively, uh, from year to year, they account for about two FTEs worth of work. So that's what we're estimating going forward for the next year. For our business operations, um, it takes approximately three FTEs worth of staff time every year to conduct those. These are overall up. There's, we have more work going on, it seems like. Um, and yeah, and these can be everything from, uh, you know, staff meetings to, you know, employee reviews to basic division administration. But these, these tasks do add up really quickly and take up, like I said, about three FTEs worth of time. Now, for the special projects, particularly the mandated and grant-funded ongoing projects, on this screen, we're listing what support we believe should be allocated to keep these going. Um, we're anticipating, we're gonna, it's going to take about, just under about one FTE to uh complete the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Consistency Amendments. For the circulation element update, it's only a small amount of time supporting the Public Works Department with the Active Transportation Plan. The lion's share of our work will focus on the environmental justice element and housing-related items. The housing element update must be completed by February twenty twenty-three. We're anticipating that we're going to be concurrently amending our land use elements as part of that process. And because of that, state law says that we must also adopt our environmental justice element. So right there, we have to expedite the processing of those projects to make sure they're all coming in at the same time. The board can make a decision on them, um, at the very latest concurrently in February. And then we're anticipating there'll be a number of implementation projects that come out of the housing element update on which we'll be working. And then we'll be working also on the second phase of the safety element update project. So when you add that all up, it comes out to just under about six FTEs worth of time. Now, for the non-mandated ongoing projects, uh, we are right now recommending, starting with the local coastal program amendments, and there's three of them, the accessory dwelling units, coastal resiliency, and short-term rentals, um, LCPAs. Um, all of those, uh, excuse me, two of those are in an, were in an incomplete, excuse me, actually, I should back up. That's incorrect. One of them's in an incomplete status. Two of those are currently dead, in the sense that we don't have an app, active application. Uh, more specifically, the ADU's uh local coastal program amendment, um, the Coastal Commission staff got back to us and told us that they would like the board to reconsider the parking requirements that the board adopted as part of their LCPA. So the board has some options about how they would like to proceed with that, but um, we have run out of the money, uh, that the board allocated for that project. So we're going to be going back to the board and asking them how they would like us to proceed if or when on that project. I already described to you the coastal resiliency, LCPA, uh, Director Plowman, Supervisor Hart, Supervisor Williams are working with the Coastal Commission executive staff to try to resolve the disagreements on that. So we're not anticipating very much work on that, only a very little amount, just to support Director Plowman. And then with regard to the short-term rentals, LCPA, this is not mandated. And um, there is quite a bit of work that the Coastal Commission staff expects us to complete, um, to revive this application. So as of now, because uh if staffing levels remain current, uh, other current levels, I should say, then uh we're not going to have uh capacity to take these on, and we're recommending that the board delay these um during the next fiscal year. With regard to the other projects, uh, the majority of the work we anticipate will occur on the utility scale solar ordinance and policy amendments, and that will occur uh most likely during the second half of the fiscal year, after we get over the hump with the housing element update. And when you add up that time, it comes out to a little bit over three FTEs worth of work. Okay, so this slide shows the schedule, estimated schedule for the projects. Um, this is in a different colored format in your staff report. I'm not going to go into this in any detail. You're more than welcome to ask me any questions about it. Uh, the takeaway from this is that next year, we're busy, really busy. As we complete particularly the housing element and those other related projects, then it'll free up capacity particularly for the next two fiscal years, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and then twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And that'll give the board more options for different projects to take on. So with that said, I already explained uh the logic behind the LCPAs. The board could throw those back into our work program if they wanted, provided they allocate the resources to do so. We're going to be uh supporting uh the development of the Recreation Master Plan. Another item that we're anticipating coming up on the horizon very soon is that as the groundwater sustainability agencies or GSAs adopt their groundwater sustainability plans according to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA, then we will need to update our comprehensive plan to reflect the standards that are set forth in those uh respective plans. So for example, if a project was proposed within an area which is subject to a groundwater sustainability plan, we would want to make sure that, you know, the appropriate findings of approval to demonstrate they have adequate water is consistent with what that plan indicates must be a safe yield um for the project site. So, uh, other projects, I already mentioned the implementation programs that we anticipate. And uh, we also could update, consolidate, and simplify the comprehensive plan components. That's one that's very popular. But could be a very, very big project or more condensed, depending on how we approach that. Uh, we have different ideas on it. Now, as I explained earlier, we do not assume that we will receive an expansion of resources, staffing or otherwise, when we develop the work program. However, if there was potential expansions, uh, particularly if, if it was one-time funding, well, we would recommend the board uh consider our zoning ordinance amendments to allow more development uses with ministerial entitlements um and/or amending and updating our residential and commercial zoning regulations. And these could have a number of different components. With, with, taking the first item, that is, allow more development uses with ministerial entitlements across the board. We hear a lot of um desire or popularity to this. There's definitely some hesitancy and opposition as well, but um, the board has definitely indicated a strong desire for us to embark on such a project. The second item would involve um updating things like our design residential standards, implementing housing element programs for, on the residential side of things. On to, on the commercial side of the ordinance amendments to um updating or getting rid of the uh shopping center zoning regulations, the, the design, uh, excuse me, the sign regulations, lighting regulations, things like that, which consistently come up on project to project that we haven't been able to get to. So. With that, I am now going to turn it over to the very competent housing element team to provide a report to you on housing-related matters. So if Ms. Steele is ready to go, I'm ready to drive.
Sure, Dan. Thank you. Uh, hello, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. My name is Jessie Steele, and today I'm going to be presenting a, a report on housing-related matters, as Dan mentioned. So to start us off, we'll talk about grant-funded housing projects. The county currently has three housing projects in the works, which are funded through state grants. First, uh, the county received a total of three hundred and seven thousand dollars in SB two grant funding to help cover the cost of the ADU ordinance amendments and the housing bill implementation project. Of those funds, approximately one hundred and ninety-two thousand was allocated to the housing bill implementation project, and around a hundred and fifteen thousand was allocated to the ADU ordinance amendments. The county also received two grants to help cover the costs of the twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty-two housing element update. We received five hundred thousand dollars from the local early action planning, or LEAP, grant, and around one hundred and sixty-four thousand from the regional. and around 164,000 from the regional early action planning or REAP grant. Next slide, please. So first, we'll go over the status of the housing bill implementation project or HBI, which is broken up into two phases. And it includes zoning ordinance amendments to implement various state housing laws that have gone into effect over the last few years. Phase one includes three amendments that will be completed in summer 2022 and adopted about early 2023. We have low barrier navigation center or LBNC amendments. And an LBNC is a low-barrier service and rich shelter that is focused on moving people into permanent housing. And it provides temporary living facilities while case managers connect individuals that are experiencing homelessness to income, public benefits, health services, shelter and housing. The LBNC amendments will allow these facilities as a use by right in areas zoned for mixed use and non-residential zones that permit multifamily uses if certain criteria are met. We will also be updating our density bonus provisions to reflect recent updates to state density bonus law, including new types of eligible projects and higher density bonuses for qualifying projects. And lastly, we will add provisions to the zoning ordinances to reflect the provisions of the Housing Accountability Act, which Alan mentioned earlier, also known as the HAA. And in short, the HAA limits the county's ability to reduce the density of or deny qualifying housing development projects. And it also provides a streamlined permitting process for these projects. Such projects are only subject to objective standards, conditions and policies, which is an important thing to know. Next slide, please. So then we have phase two of the HBI, which includes three components that will be initiated in probably early 2023 and completed toward the end of 2024. The first of the three components are amendments to implement AB 2162, which provides ministerial streamlined approval for qualifying supportive housing developments. And then second, staff will develop objective design and planning standards for qualifying multifamily including SB 35 projects. And then lastly, staff will develop a ministerial permit type and processing procedures for certain types of housing projects. Next slide, please. The next ongoing housing projects we have is the ADU Local Coastal Program Amendment or LCPA. In August of 2021, staff submitted the ADU LCPA to the coastal commission. And in September of 2021, the commission responded with requests for additional information, including a potential coastal zone-wide parking study to analyze the impacts of ADUs on coastal access parking. Staff is working with the coastal commission to respond to their requests. And we anticipate that the commission will probably certify the ADU LCPA sometime in early 2023. Next slide, please. And currently, LRP's biggest and highest priority housing project is the 2024-2032 housing element update. The county must update the housing element every eight years. And in pertinent part, the housing element must include an analysis of current and projected housing needs, an inventory of sites available for residential development, and a set of goals, policies and programs to meet the county's housing needs. Or in other words, to meet its RENA. The county's six-cycle RENA of 5,664 units is nearly 10 times larger than our current fifth-cycle RENA of 661 units. And for the first time, the RENA is now divided into two subregions. We have the North County and the South Coast. And as you can see from the last row of these tables, the county faces a significant shortage of low and very low-income units in both subregions. The state recommends that each RENA income category have a buffer of about 15 to 30%, which is not shown on these tables, is not included in the 5,664 units. Current capacity that is shown in these tables also does not include potential new units that may come from ADUs or other new state housing laws like SB 9, for example. The bottom line here is that the county must rezone properties, meaning change land use, increase the density as part of the housing element in order to meet our very large RENA. Next slide, please. So here we have a little snapshot of our housing element timeline. First, we have the sites inventory, which we started working on in April and we anticipate will be completed, excuse me, we started in February and we anticipate will be completed in April of this year. Then in March, we are going to initiate public outreach, which will continue through early 2023. We will be working on compiling all of our information into the draft housing element and starting preliminary hearings from now until October of 2022. Then we have the EIR that is going to be worked on from May through December of 2022. And lastly, the final housing element and adoption hearings will occur probably in October of 2022 and continue through early 2023. Next slide, please. So there are over 30 housing bills that were passed in September of 2021 and became effective this year. The Board of Supervisors may direct staff to initiate zoning ordinance amendments to implement these bills, which include SB 9 and SB 10. And we're not gonna go into any specific details about these bills today, but we did circulate a handout to the, your commission, which provides a list of 11 of the major bills and has a summary of each one. Next slide. All right, and that completes my portion of the presentation. I can answer any questions we have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Steele. And just to conclude, our recommended actions are set forth on the first page of the staff report. And they consisted of receiving the report that we just provided to you, directing us to present any recommendations that you might have regarding the work program to the board for consideration. And then determine that the, your actions today are not a project pursuant to State Secret Guide lines, section 15378B5. I should also share with you, I made virtually, excuse me, we made virtually identical presentation to the Montecito Planning Commission last week. And I just want to summarize their recommended actions, excuse me, their actions that they would like us to present to the board. First one consisted of creating an ad hoc committee to work with the California Coastal Commission on executive level issues pertaining to the short terminals and accessory dwelling units, LCPAs. And more specifically, they wanted, they were suggesting that a board ad hoc committee consisting of two members and the director work with the executive commissioner Ainsworth on these items and others. They also suggested that the board should direct us to pursue ordinance amendments for SB 9 and SB 10. Third, they asked us to find more creative uses without increasing density, that is, using things like dead retail space, unused county lands or other techniques for new housing sites. Fourth item was that they would like the county to consider funding projects in order to actualize them without compromising other countywide projects. That is, funding projects in Montecito without slowing down or compromising county ride projects. And what they suggested was coming up with a separate fund that comes from, for example, property taxes from the Montecito area to fund those Montecito projects. And then finally, they said they do not support the ordinance amendments regarding allowing more ministerial development or uses, which was one of the two potential expansion projects that I summarized for you today. So with that said, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clemmon. There's a lot to swallow. I'm personally choking on about half of it, but we'll read it again and hear these things come up again in various contexts. And I'm sure you'll say, remember back in February when we talked about this or that? So we'll look to the commissioners for their questions, suggestions and how to proceed. Commissioner Fraini.
Thank you, Chair Cooney. I agree fully with your conversation and sentiments there. I would just put this question out to our commission. I appreciated in closing what, what Mr. Clemmons told us about Montecito Planning Commission's points of view. And I've got to say, after listening to all of this, I appreciate the work and effort they put into it. And would, my thought would be that we would support their recommendations. So if everybody wanted, anybody wanted to think about that, that would be my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley. Lawrence, you did.
I wanted to ask Mr. Clemmon to maybe repeat what the MPC said. I understood, you know, maybe, maybe I didn't find it in the report, but there was one item that I honestly didn't hear. I understood that they wanted to see the ordinance amendments include SB 9 and 10, and that's apparently not in the work program right now. Is that one item? Can you just go through, did you have them on a slide, Dan, or where, where were the MPC recommendations verbal?
Yeah, Commissioner Bradley, through Chair, and I apologize, I do not have a slide. The hearing happened after I was, the delegate submitted this presentation. But I'll quickly go through them once again. There were five recommendations. The first was the board should create the ad hoc committee to work with Director Plowman and the coastal commission executive level management regarding the short terminals and accessory dwelling units, LCPAs. The second item has to do with SB 9, SB 10, they want us to pursue ordinance amendments. In the current work program, we have that in there. And it's an option for the board to tell us which housing bills they would like us to work on next. As Ms. Steele stated, we have three current housing bills that we essentially have the ordinances drafted. And those, of course, we started on before SB 9 and SB 10 were actually adopted by the state. So now we're at a point, we know that SB 9, SB 10 are very popular. The question is, okay, now what do you want us to work on next, board? Out of the litany of potential housing-related bills, the 11 on that handout that Ms. Steele provided you or otherwise. We're anticipating the board to say, yes, work on SB 9 and 10. We believe that's most, that's the highest priority. But yeah, we can't do that. It's just, right now, it's a matter of, do, does the board want us to prioritize those amongst the others? And then just to complete out, the three remaining actions out of the five total from the Montecito Plan Commission are find more creative uses without increasing density, that is, using dead retail space, unused county lands for new housing sites. Next item, fund projects using some sort of fund coming from Montecito to particularly fund Montecito-specific projects such that it would not compromise or slow down countywide projects. And then finally, the Montecito Planning Commission does not support pursuing ordinance amendments to allow more development and uses with ministerial entitlements, which was one of the potential expansion projects that we have summarized in the staff report today.
Okay, I really appreciate you going through those because I probably agree with most of those, but maybe not all of them. And I honestly don't think it's my place to opine, agree or otherwise on their concept of funding Montecito projects with Montecito tax base. I mean, that's, it's a financial suggestion. I know that's gonna, that's been a common issue in Montecito because they do have a higher tax base than most other parts of the county. But I kind of don't want to include that in our incorporation of their recommendations because I think what you're hoping is that we are going to incorporate their recommendations into our recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, right? So, and I also am not sure that I would vote for not supporting staff's concept of allowing additional ministerial actions to cope with some of these housing mandates, I think is really where it's going. So I'm not sure if the commission wants to try to tackle any of that. I mean, that's just the Montecito recommendations to us. And then we have all the rest of it that we get to look at to recommend to the board. So I'm not sure how you want to approach that, Mr. Chair.
Well, let's, there is a lot of material here to approach. And I'm not sure we can do any in-depth study today that would lead to more quality recommendations. I, I tend to think your, your reaction to the Montecito recommendations is, is a good one. Certainly with regard to the Montecito tax base, that's a novel idea to separate it out. It does, it does have problems in that you're gonna start seeing various areas of the county saying, we have this high a tax base, so we want special attention to our, our processes that don't slow down the rest. And while I'm close to Montecito, I, I see the, the risk in that. So I don't think, like you, I don't think we can just simply say, we concur with all the recommendations that the Montecito commissions made to staff for passing to the board. Let's hear from other commissioners. Is Commissioner Park on the line? Doesn't sound like it. Let us know if you are Commissioner Park, and we'll give you an opportunity to contribute. Commissioner Martinez, this is doubly hard in your first meeting to try and digest a portion of this huge document. You know, we, we know our long-range planning division is churning away in the background all the time, 100% of the time, and they only surface once in a while to talk to us about what they're doing. And it's huge. It's a huge amount of work and a huge amount of progress. But to go beyond the recommendations of the, of the long-range planning committee I have elected to do that today. Any comments from you? Your first glance at all this, Commissioner Martinez, and it's fine if you don't.
Well, actually, actually, I, the, Commissioner, tell me if I'm mispronouncing it, Bradley?
Yes, you got it right.
All right, there we go, there we go. You, your question actually was, was what I had in mind as to whether Montecito's commission, planning commission's recommendations are something that we just historically just adopt without question. But, but I appreciate what the explanation, and I do agree with your comments in regards to that. I read it over and, and you know, it's adopting something and then becoming their advocate in a sense without even looking into what they were, were even recommending. So that would be my only comment, really. Appreciate that.
Chair Cooney, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I do want to clarify one point and may help with some of the deliberations. The way this works, that is, the way the commentary from the two planning commissions is presented to the board is, it, it's not a procedure where the Montecito Planning Commission is making a recommendation to you and then you make, your county planning commission makes a recommendation on behalf of them. We present both the Montecito Planning Commission's recommendations and the county planning commission's recommendations separately. So you do not need to follow the Montecito Plan Commission's recommendations. You don't have to worry about them being presented to the board because we will do so, for what it's worth.
Actually, so, Mr. Chair, I, I had a little bit of a question on that.
Please.
Mr. Clemmon, and I, I may just have this mixed up in my head. There, in the coastal zone, is that where the county planning commission is supposed to take the MPC recommendations and forward it to the board, but not in the inland areas? I thought there was something where we are kind of stuck being in that middle man position in the recommendations. Do I, did I misunderstand?
Oh, no, Commissioner Bradley, through your chair, actually, you're, you're correct with regard to development projects and applications. And then also, for example, amendments to the various codes. That is, if it's just the Montecito inland area versus if it's the coastal zone and all those. Yeah, that will have, that'll play a role in whether or not that, on, to whom they are making the recommendation. This is just an informational item. I mean, for the board's benefit, it's not required and it's not addressed by that section of the county code. So, but we, we just want to make sure the commissions, both commissions' voices are heard at the board on, if they do have. on, if they do have recommendations on the work program.
That, I mean, that's great. I'm sorry, through the chair, because I guess what I'm hearing from a couple of the Commissioners is that we would concur with quite a few of their recommendations, including the one about suggesting that the Coastal Commission and Planning Management have a work, you know, working group on the ADU and STR issues because that has been a long concern in all communities, frankly, in the coastal zone. And then the SB nine and 10 being incorporated as an ordinance work, and then the creative ways about, without increasing density, using other square footage available for housing production, and then everything but the funding from the Montecito tax base. I would concur with everything that they had. Except for, I'm confused about what, what exactly the recommendation from them is about looking into ministerial action increases as a way to streamline permitting. Was that really just on housing production, Mr. Clement, or was it something else? Like environmental justice, looking over all this stuff, you know, what does that mean?
Yeah, Commissioner Brightley, through your chair, it's actually broader than just housing. It could be, for example, agricultural aid development. We have a number of requests to consider agricultural structures up to a certain size to be exempt, or, or subject to ministerial entitlements. That would not be subject, for example, to like, design review and things like that. So it is broader than just housing, but the, the specific scope has yet to be decided. If, if we are given the go-ahead to pursue this project, at that point, we would then have to go refine it to figure out exactly what's in and out of the project description.
The only reason I bring it up is that the county planning commission has a lot more variety where that tactic could be deployed, and, you know, way more than what the Montecito Planning Commission has, just on our ag projects alone, right? So that's why I guess I would, I would not concur with that one recommendation until we have a better chance to look at it. So, thank you. I've taken up enough time, sorry.
Oh, I don't think, you should be sorry. I think your, your questions are all apt, and the, and the issue before us is, what do we do today, given the limited time we have and the limited exposure that we've had to an excellent report? Staff is recommending a basic response that we receive and file the report and make a determination that it's not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, and then direct staff to provide the report to various agencies. So there's no recommendation by staff in this report that we adopt any suggestions beyond that for the board. It might be of interest to the board to hear from us. My concern is that, other than the specifics you've mentioned, Commissioner Brightley, I don't have, I'm not prepared to tell the board, we're also concerned about this, that, or the other thing. We're relying on our staff to present this amount and its recommendations to the board, and, and then we'll implement them as required. Doesn't look like, like we have Commissioner Park anymore. I don't want to leave him out, but he may be having technical connection problems. So we had some remarks from Commissioners Farini and Martinez, and you. So at this point, are you prepared, Commissioner Brightley, to make a motion on our behalf to adopt?
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out, we do have, it looks like a telephone caller for public comment.
Oh, great, great, I'm glad you did. Let's go to public comment, please.
All right, we do have someone joining us via telephone. Hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself. There you go, can you hear us?
And this is Commissioner Park, I've finally been able to get unmuted, so I do have some things to add.
Oh, great, okay.
So, John, have you been following our discussion here?
Yeah.
Do you have questions or comments?
I do, I'll rattle them off quickly. One, I agree with the comments about the, some reservation about the Montecito Planning Commission recommendations, the one that you made, Commissioner Cooney, about this novel idea of linking the tax base with treatment, I don't go for that. I also want to caution people that the word development, all sorts of things in our code, not just housing, and sometimes we want ministerial, more ministerial processing developments that includes, you know, judo studios in shopping centers, or some kinds of ag processing and things that, that need better, more streamlined processes than we have right now. So I wouldn't join in a blanket opposition to those kind of efforts. Some questions I have, one, proposed lighting ordinance. Our folks at WeWatch, who are so engaged, and I really appreciate that from them, they've been patiently waiting for that for years. It was on the first work program hearing that I ever saw, and, and I heard Cecilia Brown and Dan Blau, Birds of a Feather, right, both said, you know, we ought to get to this because it'll prevent a lot of work by development review in preparing lighting conditions for every single project if we just have an ordinance. Is that ever going to happen, or should we just tell people, forget it? That's, that's, that's question number one, if Mr. Clement can answer that one real quick.
Yeah, Commissioner Park, through the chair, that is actually one of the components of the potential expansion project involving updates to the residential and commercial regulations that I was envisioning. So that's my proposal. And I should say, I have received fairly recent communication from Nancy Emerson on behalf of WeWatch, saying that the standards, they provided, excuse me, they provided us with a model ordinance a number of years ago, which actually has become a bit obsolete, and they're working on an update for another jurisdictions' lighting regulations. So we'd love to see what they produce, and then we hopefully could dust that off and use it as a model for ours. So, so it's not been forgotten, we want to get to it.
Okay, two more questions. One, you heard my question on the prior presentation, related to housing and ag employees. I think it's just crucial in so many ways in this county. We have a labor shortage in ag. One reason we have a labor shortage, we don't have places to house people. We see project after project that's ag-related, especially these cannabis ones, that either don't provide any more housing, or they literally take it away from what's already there. I think it relates to all sorts of other important things. Our GHDs in this county keep going up instead of going down like all the other counties. And one reason is people are crisscrossing the county from one place to another to match housing with jobs. And we just have to have more onsite housing, at least for ag, and probably other things. So do we have anything in the work program that's going to address that issue? And do we have any sense of whether we need to put more effort into the ag employee dwelling unit ordinance so that it actually gets utilized?
Yes, Commissioner Park, through the chair, we are working on that. As one of the mandatory components to the housing element update is we need to go make an assessment on the demand for agricultural employee housing. And in fact, we have contacted the Agriculture Advisory Committee for them to provide us with information regarding their needs for agricultural employee housing. And then we're also doing outreach to the farm laborers themselves pursuant to state requirements. And all of that will be definitely considered as part of the housing element update. And as part of that, you'll be afforded the opportunity to provide policy recommendations about how to address that demand for housing.
Yeah, just as an offer of help on that, you know, I'm, I'm, more or less, I request the Parks Department, I'm doing an enormous amount of outreach to, to landowners, especially ag landowners, related to recreational master plan. And I think this puts in, not in terms of recreation, but in terms of something that's just as important or more so. And so if I can be of any help in conducting outreach and all the things that I'm doing, and bringing this up and communicating to you, you let me know. And let me move on to my, my third question. We've had some, oh, advice at director's reports over the last, I think, 18 months about some addition slash reorganization, to some degree, of long-range planning, so that you'd have a, it's not a term you've used, but I use, a strike team, you know, a small group of people that can be there to throw into the breach when the board realizes, oh, aha, the ordinance we did six months ago isn't quite working right, and we need to put some resources into redoing it. You know, we could say that cannabis ordinance about every month, but, you know, all kidding aside, I like that strike team idea. If you can understand what I'm talking about, could you comment on, is that something that's works, that maybe we can suggest to our supervisors is a good idea with the upcoming budget hearings in April?
Yeah, Commissioner Park, through the chair, actually, what you just described was that rapid amendments process that we came up with as a part of that Innovate SBC Process Improvement Project. So I'm happy to say we're one step ahead of you in those recommendations. So, and we are, we've already made a presentation to the CEO on that and other recommendations that came out of that project. So we're hoping that we will be able to start implementing that. And once again, what that consists of is, for those types of amendments that you described, they're very straightforward, they're very popular, such that they're not going to require a lot of outreach, or they're not going to experience a lot of public opposition. They're CEQA exempt, and they're really things like cleanup items, state mandates over which the board has very little to no discretion, and other items that we just need to get through the process. So I'm happy to say we're already on it.
Good deal, and do you have funding for it? Do you need any help in asking for it?
Yeah, Commissioner Park, through the chair, right now, we, we have a plan for implementing that. Once we get fully staffed, we need to fill that vacancy, get that person up to speed. And at that point, Ms. Karina Venegas, who is primarily responsible for the management and processing the zoning ordinance amendments packages, will have the support. She will need to do those one-off, rapid amendments, separate from those ordinance amendment packages that she's assigned to processing.
Very good. Well, I thank you for your presentation today. It was very good, very clear, and the work you guys do is phenomenally complicated, and I'm very appreciative of it. Thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner Park. In terms of moving forward from this spot, I think Commissioner Brightley was closest to making recommendations in conjunction with what she heard about the, the recommendations of the Montecito Commission. But I'm not sure exactly how you want to state that, Commissioner Brightley, but I do want to move toward a motion. There's no question that the report was excellent and needed. Not only what is planned for the future, but what's been accomplished already. Long-range planning staff should be complimented for all of the work that was done. And I don't want that to be lost in the, in the question of whether we're going to be able to accomplish everything planned for the near future. But, but how to turn it into a motion of use to long-range planning staff when they take this to the board, I, I think we should have something that you're approaching, Commissioner Brightley, and if you're willing to move forward in that direction, now's the time.
Okay. But can you, there was one other thing that we didn't talk about. What about the signed ordinance? This is like in memory of Dan Blau. Because the signed ordinance is something that he asked about probably every year. So can Mr. Clement tell us where the signed ordinance might be in the long stack?
Sure. Commissioner Riley, through your chair, there's two versions of that. There's a comprehensive update to the signed regulations, which is what the late Commissioner Blau wanted. And there's a more streamlined, just, update. We definitely want to do that more comprehensive update, and that would be a component of that potential expansion project that I described to you, which would involve updating the residential and commercial regulations. So not only would we throw in the lighting regulations that WeWatch and Commissioner Park were discussing, we would also want to throw in the signed regulations too. So of course, that would involve going back to the Boards of Architectural Review to develop those standards for it.
All right, thank you for that clarification. So that's basically already in your work program. So with that, I'm, I'm going to try for a motion here. So I would move that the county planning commission receives the report fiscal year '22 to '25 work program from Long Range Planning Division, and that directs staff to present the county planning commission's recommendations on the fiscal year '22 to '25 work program to the Board of Supervisors for consideration, and determine that our action today is not to consider project under CEQA Guidelines 15378B5. And as a comment on the motion, that, that the county planning commission concurs generally with the Montecito Planning Commission recommendations regarding the ad hoc committee concept with Coastal Commission regarding ADUs and short-term rentals, that SB nine and 10 should be incorporated into housing ordinance updates as feasible, and that in all the work, the long-range planning staff hopefully can find more creative uses to use empty square footage for additional housing production. That's it. Because the last two recommendations from Montecito were not something we concur on. So that's my motion. I hope someone got it down. Sorry.
Commissioner Farini?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Very good. Discussion on the motion from any, any Commissioner? Don't see any discussion from the Commission. Any last comments, Mr. Clement?
Chair Cooney, actually, one last comment I forgot to share with you. Ms. Merrill Brooks from the Citizens Planning Association, she contacted me late yesterday. The CPA said that they, you saw their comment letter, that was included with the, in the record. She did ask if I could provide a report on past projects that the CPA has recommended be adopted in the work program. When I questioned which specific projects they were considering, the only one Ms. Brooks provided was consideration of a Long Poak Valley community plan, which she and, I guess, I guess it was Supervisor Centeno, considered at one point in time. But anyhow, so that was the only other item I have to offer, for what it's worth.
Okay, thanks. So in the absence of additional comment from the Commission, are we ready to vote? Commissioner Park, are you ready to vote on the motion?
Chair Cooney?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Farini, please.
Did we have public comment?
Yes. Okay, thank you, though.
That's right, I shouldn't have done the motion. I should have waited, sorry.
All right, it's, it's ready for a vote. Mr. Villalobos?
Commissioner Brightley?
I'm sorry, was there public comment or no?
There's no public comment.
Turned out to be the only, the only call was from Commissioner Park.
So my vote is yes.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Farini?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
And Chair Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good. Thank you all. This has been a very apt learning experience. As I say, I, I don't think we're aware, day-to-day, doing our cannabis projects, that there's so much work being done behind the scenes, Mr. Clement, but you do a great job of explaining it whenever you get the chance.
And he's cheerful.
That may be an overstatement. Do we have anything else to take care of today, Mr. Wilson?
Chair Cooney and Commissioners, I think that concludes our business today.
We certainly wish you finish your recovery very soon. We certainly wish you finish your recovery very soon. Okay, then the meeting is adjourned, and thank you all very much. We'll see you on the second, next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cooney.
You're all welcome.